Thank you. And then we will move on to action items, including consideration of possible action on a request for Blueberry Hill Estates to be the only bill for actual usage of the one bypass meter and not the flat fee minimum sewer and water charges. Consideration of possible action on restoring name of Assistant DPW Director from Permanent Engineering. Consideration of possible action on appointing Shelley Harris as a full-time dispatcher at the rate of $31.29 per hour effective October 21st, 2025. Consideration of possible action on the full-time dispatcher Leah Corvo transitioning to part-time dispatcher at the rate of $27.46 per hour effective December 1st, 2025. Consideration of possible action on the issuance of a one-day liquor license for Rapskalian Brewery for Pickleball University on October 24th, 2025. Consideration of possible action on the issuance of a one-day liquor license for Oakland Brewery for Pickleball University on November 14th, 2025. Consideration of possible action authorizing the town administrator to sign the agreement with Morse Engineering and Construction Industries for engineering design permitting the next 700 feet to continue the Grand Trunk Trail on the Riverlands property for the amount of $34,250. Consideration of possible action on authorizing Conservation Agent Lauren Vivier to execute a contract with Conservation Works for $19,600 for the purpose of developing a master plan for the Plimpton property. Consideration of possible action on authorizing the Conservation Department to accept a donation of books valued over $100 from David Mitchell. Consideration of possible action on loading the place in support remaining articles for the special town meeting. Consideration of possible action on closing the warrant for the special town meeting. Consideration of possible action of adopting the ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan of 2025. Consideration of possible action on accepted amended temporary DOD policy to remove specific permitting requirements. Consideration of possible action to engage in investigation of the allegations made at the last meeting. Consideration of possible action on the reappointment of Reed Hillman to the Personnel, Classification and Policy Committee for a term to expire July 4th, 2025. Old business, new business, correspondence, approval of minutes, Citizens Forum, and adjourned. With that, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
And pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And again, I want to take a moment of silence tonight as a prayer for peace of everybody in Ukraine and the conflicts abroad. You know, when you just look at what's going on in Europe and you think about what our boys died there in the '40s, it's just very sad. So, just a prayer for peace for Ukraine. Public service announcements, Chase?
Yeah, I would just like to thank Lauren Vivier and the Conservation Department for the pumpkin walk Saturday night. I went down there with my kids. It was a very nice time, so thank you for your hard work on that.
Thanks, Lauren. Mary, don't?
No.
All right, and I have none. Oh.
Halloween.
Oh, yeah. I have to announce for Mary that there's none on Halloween, there will be candy in Town Hall, which she could have announced, but she needed my air of authority.
Yes, exactly. But I want to say, bring your children because the offices are decorated beautifully. There's so much spirit. There's a lot of ghosts hanging from the town clerk about fifty ghosts or something, and they're all going to have candy. And we've never had this much spirit thanks to our town administrator.
Thank you. We love this time of year, and so we will all be in full costume, or a good number of us will be in full costume as well. Children be prepared. You don't know who you'll see in Town Hall.
That's a lot of fun.
Yeah, you got to have a little fun.
All right, great. So with that, anything else you need me to announce, Mary? Okay.
No one good said.
All right. So with that, we're going to move to department reports, and we'll start with DPW, Heather.
How you doing, Heather? So, just a quick couple little things that are coming to mind, and then if you have any questions on my report, I'll be happy to answer them. Currently, the Cedar Street sidewalks are out to bid. The bids are due, oh, I shouldn't know the date, the 30th, so that is good. As I told you last time, we have also submitted for the next phase of complete street sidewalks on Cedar Street. I was doing some support work on that today. In addition, I've been supporting the landfill grading project, and we have a small paving for some mill and just milling of some areas and repaving of some areas, some smaller areas that are really deteriorated in town that we're hoping to do before winter. So, on Willard Road, and that is coming in on Thursday. So those are kind of in the things that are keeping me busy, along with water and sewer billing that just got completed and the bill should be going out. So I'm happy to answer any questions on my reports and any other questions that you may have.
It seemed pretty straightforward for me, Mary and Chase.
Yep. All right, easy enough.
All right, Shane, you want to come down for the water and sewer?
Good evening. How you doing, Shane?
Good, how are you?
Same old, same old.
I'll try to be brief. So we started another hydrogen sulfide study that's going on right now as we speak. We have sensors on Hall Road. Hydrogen sulfide is what eats away at your pipes and the structures. We know we have a problem over here on Hall Road, and we'll probably, once this study's done, we'll be coming back and probably have to do some chemical addition someplace. It's just a matter of where we own property and where we can add it and get enough detention time. So that study's going on as we speak, and when we get the results, I'll be sure to update the board. Hydro flushing, obviously, we started that like we do every fall around winterizing hydrants. Today, they elevated the drought status for this area, so we're probably going to cut back on flushing and just target the areas that we usually have problems and dead ends just to, legally, we don't have to, but it just doesn't look good when we're in a drought to be out there just flushing all that water. So we'll back off on that and probably wrap it up in a couple of weeks and have the hydrants. Good to go for the winter. PFOS sampling, we just got another round of results in from the wastewater plant. We are definitely taking some hits down there. Again, there's no regulations right now on that. The water side was just re-sampled. I was on the lab, on the phone with the lab before I came to the meeting. I should have those results tomorrow, and I will update the board at the next time I come here.
And is there suspicion that that is still coming from the landfill?
I, so I don't know where it's coming from. It's so, historically, you haven't taken a lot of big hits. On the last round of sampling, one of the wells took a hit, and what happens is when you get into droughts and the water table low is you get more contaminants in your water. We saw it when we went through the perchlorate issue, which eventually went away. So, right now, the thing is to just keep sampling and then, you know, depending on what we get for results, and you're going to need a new water plant at some point anyways, so maybe you include PFOS removal when you upgrade your water plant. So, right now, it's just collect more data and see where we're at. Because your wells, too, three of your three big wells, or three of the bigger ones, they all combine together, so the water's considered blending. So if you have one source with no PFOS, and then you have another source with PFOS, but it's blending together and dropping that level down, you might be okay. But like I said, it's going to be, we're just going to have to keep doing more sampling. And we actually did more than we were required to this year, I mean, this quarter, because we want to see what's out there. So, as those results come in, I'll be happy to update the board on that.
Yeah, so I think I was thinking about it on the sewer side because that's where the conversation was. So you were talking on the well side where we're getting hit with more.
Yeah, I'm talking on the drinking water side, and on the wastewater side, we're seeing it coming into the plant, and it's going out higher than it comes in. We also just had an industry that we tested that had some pretty good hits, but I think I've told this board before, you cannot hold a lot of value in one sample point, right? The data, they're testing down to such small limits that we took a hit one time, went back and tested the following week, and it was negative. So, right now, it's just getting data and building a database, and then we'll move from there.
Okay.
Okay, because it's important, right? It's kind of, it's a, it's a big thing, and it's not, it's not cheap to treat. So, we'll, I'll keep you updated as we go through that process, okay? And then the only other thing is I have a new intern from the high school that started early in the month. That's going really well. Very, very smart person, very, very into it, so I'm happy to have her aboard, and basically that's all I have for you this evening.
How many hours does she work?
She works three hours a day, 15 hours a week. We pay her pretty good money. She's pretty happy, but she's really into it.
Oh, every day she works?
Yeah, she's there for three hours every day.
Oh, great.
So, and she's into it. She's a very, very bright person. She's been great to work with, and we'll continue that program going.
Excellent. Chase, anything for Shane?
Nothing.
I just was curious, and maybe this is average, you had 19 emergency repairs in August. Is that typical, or is that pretty high?
Yeah. But if you look, 15 of those were E1 pumps.
Okay.
So that's how I break it down, right? An emergency can be anything from alarm going off in the plant in the middle of the night, someone comes in.
Oh, that's what you mean, 15? I didn't know with the one five.
Out of the 19, 15 of them would be one pump.
Okay, so only four were something else.
Exactly.
Oh, okay. That means difference.
Any other questions?
No.
Just one question.
Go.
A resident asked me about hydrants in Fiskdale, and are there any that are non-operable right now?
So, we had, so we had two hydrants that weren't working on Main Street, and it wasn't that we didn't want to get out and fix them. It's the process with DOT, I'll say what it is, it's a nightmare. And it takes a long time to get permission to get out there, and once we got the permission, we went out there and fixed them. So, as we sit here tonight, no, to my knowledge, all the hydrants are working, but that's part of the exercise when we went to rise of hydrants, which, as I just stated, we're in the middle of doing.
Great. All right, I have nothing else, I'll see you guys soon.
Right. Have a great evening.
You too. We're, I think Jeremy's up. Hey, Jeremy.
Hello.
How are things in facilities, sir?
Good. Thank you for the opportunity to come up here and speak.
You're very welcome.
This is first, first for me.
It's a real aw.
So, current projects out for bid, we have the library deck and ramp project, and we have the public safety complex exterior door project. Those are the ones that are out for bid. Upcoming projects, we have the library settling floor project that should hopefully start next week. Police Department needs a shower replacement, and the library elevator project, which will jump me into Saturday. We had an entrapment in that elevator, and that is getting fixed as we speak. Otis Elevator came out to look at it today. Parts are coming on Wednesday. Hopefully, that'll be fixed on Wednesday.
And if I could just jump on that because we had a question on ADA because of that elevator. Becky rescheduled her programming today to the church, was nice enough to let us have space, and then tomorrow's reading program will actually be held here in Town Hall. So, the programs are continuing, just moving them around a little bit.
And.
Director.
Green Communities, that reporting is due soon. April from DPW and Kristen from the Public Safety Complex have been very helpful with the information from those buildings. Future projects are the exterior trim repairs for the Town Hall, Cobb and Library, like to see if I can get that done, and Center Office Building carpet replacement. We'll see if I can get that going in the next fiscal year, '27. Senior Center, that was kind of what I got thrown into when I first started. That was very interesting. Leslie Wong has been very helpful for that. That seems to be fully operational. All is good.
All right, great. How's the transition been so far?
Busy.
Isn't?
It's been interesting. There's a lot of work that I did not know that Robin did, or Robin Schrabitz. It's very interesting, and it's exciting. I like it.
How long, how long's it been, though?
About seven months.
I think one of the biggest challenges has been that the part-time position that we put in to assist Jeremy on the IT side, we did hire someone, and then he had to take some time off. He came back, then he took more time off, and then he is resigning, I think, because he has to take so much time off for family reasons. So we've reposted that position, but Jeremy hasn't, unfortunately, been able to have the consistency of that part-time help that is necessary to make this work because it was a combination of two full-time jobs, and now it's basically one and a half, but that half hasn't been there.
Yeah.
So.
I think I've done it for about 28 weeks, and I've had, I've had help for probably six.
Yeah. I mean, I was dubious about the one and a half a little bit, to be honest, but it makes sense to start there. So, but in terms of just staffing, evaluate what is realistic or not, probably, I don't know, like six months or something, because you're not going to really know until you have someone really in.
Correct.
How long has this position been posted?
We just reposted it this week.
Just this week.
Oh, right.
Just last week, yeah. Last week was his last week. He went to South Carolina to move his mother. I just found out last Sunday.
Well, that's, we don't need to get into that.
Oh, yeah. It's been a week. That's been posted.
Yeah. It was more, it was personal reasons, not the work, and his work was good. So that's why we kind of held when he did have needs sometime, we're like, yep, we'll hold the job for you, you're good.
Yeah. It's not one of those remote jobs.
Yeah. We don't have to get into the.
I have just have a question, though. You know when you have to report your energy data, that your energy usage to the green communities?
Correct.
Is that like monthly or annually, or how often?
That is for the entire fiscal year.
So you just do it once?
Yes.
At the end of the fiscal year?
Yeah, it's due November for the year prior.
And do you have to fall within a certain usage to stay like in compliance?
I think they want to see the numbers going down. Depending, of course, what projects you have going on, I mean, they're going to change with the senior center, that electric, the electricity bill's going to go sky-high because we're not using oil any there, anymore over there. So I think they're just kind of.
But do they like report back and say, you're doing well, or we want you here, or Heather's shaking her head, no? Like, are there any consequences to the kind of data that we give them?
Last year, the only question I was asked was, why do we use more or less gasoline or diesel for the cars?
But they, okay, but they don't have any kind of thing that you have to follow.
Because that's kind of how they're pushing us, is toward electric.
Yeah, they're making everybody go to lifer, so the bills are all going to go up, right?
Right. Electric bills are going to go up, and so I think they're more concerned about the non-clean, if you will.
Okay. Anything else, Jeremy?
That's it.
All right, anything for Jeremy, Chase?
You know, I had a quick question for you. Turner's Field is our responsibility, right? Like, we maintain that fertilized seed it. Burgess is Burgess's responsibility. I wonder if there's any way you can coordinate with the maintenance staff at Burgess to all get on one cycle where like everything gets seeded together, everything gets fertilized, and we're just all together rather than?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think we can, and I think that we have ongoing discussions with Burgess anyway about doing a turf field down there and, you know, joint maintenance of those things. So I think that that's a discussion we can have. We've had the scheduling discussion, so I certainly think we can continue to work with them and do a better job of having that coordinated.
It's all on one page.
Yeah. There's no reason it should all be separate.
Right.
Okay. Anything else, Mary?
No.
All right, Jeremy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jeremy.
Okay. We are moving to action items. Action item A is consideration and possible action on a request for Blueberry Hill Estates to only be billed for actual usage of the one bypass meter and not the flat fee minimum sewer and water charges. How you guys doing?
This did go through a preliminary review with Barbara, Heather, and me, just to make sure there were no errors. We do that preliminary round, there was nothing that was an error, so it moves forward to an appeal process.
Okay. And so, please just identify yourself for the record, and obviously Heather.
Justin Stalmark from Blueberry Hill Estates.
Okay. All right, Justin. So, my understanding is you are requesting us to adjust the fees for the property. Can you just let us know why?
Well, I think Heather and I came up with a solution before the meeting, so we should be all set.
Well, okay, let's, let's just get to the.
Yep, so the reason was is we have a six-inch compound meter that feeds our development, and then there's a one-inch bypass meter that was really only there in case of maintenance or an emergency, and we were getting charged the minimum fee on that even though it wasn't an active meter. So that's what I originally came in for, looking to have that waived and only get charged for my actual usage. But talking with Heather before the meeting and talking with Shane, they're going to allow me to open that meter, get to my minimum usage on that one-inch meter, and then be able to close it. So, we'll be able to.
So, so the, so the solution being proposed is that the, because each of these meters has a minimum rate, that the smaller meter will be utilized up to a point to get to that minimum rate, you will build at the minimum rate, and then on the six-inch meter, that will be the, so it's effectively an offset.
Yes.
Oh, that worked out.
Yeah.
And that gives them the most flexibility so that if there's ever a case, like, once a year, the back flows needs to be tested. So when that backflow is tested, that has to be isolated, and by having the bypass still in there activated, it won't starve the system of water because it's the only source of the water, so that the residents still there won't be like having to not use water for an hour while the meter's tested. It will keep the water usage active, and then it can be shut off and supplement. Same way, if you have to change the meter out, at least you can still have a way to feed water to the system. In the, with these bigger meters, they some, not right away, but within five years, you're going to need to service that larger meter. They just tend to get crud in them and need to have, be flushed out, but you don't want to be starving, you know, 50 homes of water for that whole period of time when there's maintenance. So it's a good idea to have that bypass, but the solution lets them use the bypass and not have to not pay, you know, use the water as opposed to just pay for the water.
And we don't have to waive anything. Both meters are going to be used.
Yep.
Which we would have thought of that, and then we, we could have got to feed elsewhere.
And what is the, just the minute, just for my edification, what is the minimum on a one-inch bypass per month?
It's, all of our minimums are the same, it's $87.50, I think, a month right now for water, but then you also pay for the sewer, so that it's another $116.
So about a G a year. All right, well, I don't think that this requires a vote then, does it?
Nope. We just, he was already here when we determined it and was already on the count.
I just wanted to come up and say.
Sorry.
Does any, any question, concerns from the board or anything? Okay, great, guys, thank you.
Glad it worked out. Thank you.
All right. All right, Heather, where you're staying. Consideration and possible action on restoring, what's that?
This is an easy one, yeah.
Yeah, so you're just changing the name on this?
Yes.
So, well, for the record, it's consideration and possible action on restoring name of Assistant DPW Director from Permanent Engineering Technician. So we're changing the title?
Personnel did vote to approve this, went through the Personnel Committee.
Is there, is it just because it's more appropriate for marketing?
So what we, right, it's more appropriate for marketing is really the biggest clue. We weren't getting very much action on our current title, and I think a lot of people didn't know what it really means, and if you, if you, in our world of DPWs, you know, Assistant DPW Director means something to people, you know, it can get you to that next step of what you did, where a permitting and assistant engineer, it just didn't work. So we're hoping that this can drum up a little more interest in the position. It's really still the same requirements.
No change, no grade change, nothing.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the name change for, from the Permit and Engineering Technician to the Assistant DPW Director.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Great, thanks, Heather.
Thanks, Heather. How long have we had this other title? No, I mean, I'm just curious, for years?
No, it was about a year. We changed it from Operations Manager to the.
Is that when we did the classification study?
No.
No, very recently we changed. It's I've been here.
It's been about a year.
Heather, is there anything else on the agenda for you?
No.
Okay.
I don't believe so.
Let's just double check.
Thomas Morse Engineering.
No, I can answer questions on Morse Engineering if you need one.
No, you're all set. Have a good night.
Nope.
All right. Okay, we are moving on to consideration and possible action on appointing Shelley Harris as a full-time dispatcher at the rate of $31.29 per hour effective October 21st, 2025. Lieutenant. Nice to see you. Nice to meet you.
Good evening, Slapboard. Thanks for having us. As you may be aware, the chief is away at a conference at IACP in Denver, so that's why I'm sitting before you today and sharing this information with you. So I'll do my best I can. Humboldt here tonight to introduce you to Shelley Harris. We're very lucky. I'm going to read the letter that the chief has prepared for you folks tonight. The Sturbridge Police Department currently had a vacancy for dispatch. Following an interview process, Shelley Harris has been selected to fill this vacancy. Ms. Harris joins us from the University of Massachusetts Memorial Hospital Police Department, where she served as a dispatcher. Prior to that, she had several customer service positions and worked for 16 years with the Austin, Texas Police Department as a dispatcher. This extensive background provides her with a wealth of experience in public safety communications. Ms. Harris also holds an associate degree in human resources from Point University in Georgia. A thorough background investigation has been completed, and Ms. Harris is prepared to begin regular shift assignments effective on the recommended start date. Her resume is attached for your review. I respectfully recommend the appointment of Shelley Harris as a full-time dispatcher effective October 21st, 2025 at the hourly rate of $31.29 based on her significant prior experience. I further recommend she receive the benefits equivalent to those of a five-year dispatcher, excluding longevity.
Great. Questions from the board? All right, do we have a motion?
And I want to say she was offered how many jobs?
Four.
And picked us.
Oh, wow.
So, yes. All at the same time.
All at the same time.
Well, given the resume, I'm not surprised.
We didn't, we didn't allow it to happen, obviously.
You're coming here.
So please vote yes.
After this point, okay.
All right, so to that end, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Shelley Harris as a full-time dispatcher at the rate of $31.29 per hour effective October 21st, 2025.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Welcome aboard.
Thank you. If you want to go.
Yeah, cause I am.
Yeah, absolutely.
Again, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. All right, moving on to action item D, which is consideration and possible action on the full-time dispatcher Leah Corvay, transitioning to part-time dispatcher at the rate of $27.46 per hour effective December 1st, 2025.
Hi, Mr. Davis.
So, once again, humbled to introduce you once again to Leah Corvo. She's one of our best dispatchers. We are so lucky to have her, awesome employee. She is leaving for the private sector, a little more conducive to her life Monday to Friday weekends off, and we are lucky that we're here tonight because she wants to stay on part-time with us, and we're looking for your blessing as well.
I don't think we're going to have any issues without any questions.
Nope.
Do we have a motion?
And we are lucky that we're here tonight because she wants to stay on part-time with us, and we're looking for your blessing as well.
I don't think we're going to have any issues without any questions. Do we have a motion?
I will make a motion on the full-time dispatcher Leah Corvo transitioning to part-time dispatcher at the rate of twenty-seven dollars, forty-six cents per hour effective December 1st, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor? We're not going to applaud you kind of leaving, sorry.
No, completely okay.
Thank you for staying.
Of course.
Thank you for continuing.
Appreciate you coming in. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you guys so much. Have a good night.
All right, thanks, Joe.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Okay, moving on to consideration and possible action on the issuance of a one-day liquor license for Abscallion Brewery for Pickleball University on October 24th, 2025. I will make a motion to issue that license. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great, thank you. Moving on to action item F, consideration and possible action on the issuance of a one-day liquor license for Oak Brewery for Pickleball University on November 14th, 2025. So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. All right, consideration and possible action on authorizing town administrators sign an agreement with Morse Engineering and Construction Industries, LLC for engineering, design and permitting the next seven hundred feet to continue the Grand Trunk Trail on the Riverlands property for the amount of thirty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
This is all part of our trails article.
Okay. Do we have any questions for Robin on that? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator sign the agreement with Morse Engineering and Construction Industries, LLC for the engineering, design and permitting the next seven hundred feet to continue the Grand Trunk Trail on the Riverlands property for the amount of thirty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great, thank you. Moving on to consider, Lauren, consideration and possible action on authorizing the conservation agent Lauren Vivier to execute a contract with Conservation Works for nineteen thousand, six hundred dollars for the purpose of developing a master plan for the Plimpton property. How's it going, Lauren?
And I want to pass along, thank you, not only to, on Chase's heels for the pumpkin day. We had, I had actually calls from employees here and all around. What a great success it was, so.
This is just a summary. I'm not going over this tonight, but if you have any questions, feel free to. But this was just a summary on.
Okay. Okay, so what's going on, Lauren?
So Lauren Vivier, conservation agent. Back in 2023, the town voted to set aside twenty-five thousand dollars for the Plimpton Master Plan with the change of agent and then just kind of me getting caught up to speed with everything. That's kind of been pushed on the back burner. So now I'm trying to resurrect this and get that going, since that is such a valuable piece of land. That's just kind of sitting there. We do have a conservation restriction on it that's held by Opacum Land Trust. We've had meetings with Trails and Opacum Land Trust that we're all kind of on the same page of how this would move forward. Put out a request for proposal, and the lowest bid came, or the lowest request came in from Conservation Works. They're currently working on a property for Fisk Hill. They just did our baseline documentation for all of that, too. So we do have some experience working with them so far. BSC came in at about twice, more than twice the value, too. So I'm requesting to move forward and secure the contract with Conservation Works for nineteen thousand, six hundred dollars.
All right, any questions from the board? All right, well, with that, do we have a motion?
I will make a motion to authorize the conservation agent Lauren Vivier to execute a contract with Conservation Works for nineteen thousand, six hundred for the purpose of developing a master plan for the Plimpton property.
Second.
All those in favor? Thanks, Lauren, you're the best. And also, I'm going to make a motion to accept the generous donation of books from David Mitchell. You know, he's kind of a troublemaker, for a hundred dollars. Do we have a second?
Second.
And all those in favor?
I just have a quick question. How far along are we on the Fisk Hill development?
So.
I don't believe there's anything else.
Trails has already started some work on there. Obviously, you know, the parking lots there. They have started kind of clearing the path in. These are kind of two separate projects. We don't have a CR holder yet, and that is something that really needs to be done sooner than later. I know Tom Chamberlain is talking to someone. I'm also kind of reaching out to find someone that's more recreation oriented, seeing how that's kind of where this property is going. We have the survey that has been finalized by Sherman and Frederick. The pins are in with the boundaries. I should have the final baseline documentation soon. I will make sure you all get a copy of that, too, just for your own review. So then the next step would be going over, trying to find a CR holder, essentially. Trails has their plan already mapped out.
We need its holder for the conservation restrictions.
Because we bought it with CPC funds.
Okay, and then we can.
Exactly. And it's, we really should be kind of waiting until we have a CR holder to make sure that everyone's on the same page. So, but we are working, I am working with Trails and working with Robin to kind of get this back in line and doing the proper process for it.
I'm just curious. I don't know a lot about, how many, like, I know about Opacum Trust, but like, how many CR holders are out there?
Oh, a lot.
Many?
And it doesn't have to be like a land trust. It can be trustees. It can be nonprofit organizations. You know, it doesn't have to be, you know, Greater Worcester Land Trust or Opacum Land Trust. There's a lot of other options out there, too.
Even fisheries, if you wanted to. I mean, there are different.
We have reached out to them, but this property doesn't.
It doesn't fit there, yeah.
Connect with anything else owned by the state, so it's not really something there that.
Usually, they want hunting and everything. Yeah, so a lot of times it depends, too, on the nature of that land and sort of what the goal is.
Right. But they do have a, they are getting a restriction as part of the Blueberry Hill property, but that's at the bottom of the hill where this is kind of further away, so they don't really line up, especially because this property would basically have a trail mostly on the perimeter. It wouldn't be ideal for hunting.
Oh, no.
So.
Right. No, I'm just saying that that's probably why the Department of Fisheries and Wildlife is not a good holder for that.
I mean, DCR does trails, too. But again, usually they like to look for larger parcels or ones that connect. But I'm having a lot of conversations and just trying to see who might be a good fit for us to work with, too.
Every now and then I'll get some residents asking about that, and I just say we're working on it. Yeah, because people are asking, what are we doing? And it's just, right now, a matter of process. We started sort of moving forward on doing things with it, but we really shouldn't until the CR is in place. So we kind of pull back a little on some of the activity going on, which is why people haven't seen much activity. The parking is sort of done, but we really need that CR.
And part of that is just, you know, changeover in staff, changeover in people, and just everyone getting on the same page of everything now, too, which we are, opening communication channels. But if there is anyone that reaches out to you that's, you know, knows someone that might be interested, please have them reach out to Robin or myself, and we can just have that conversation with them and.
I don't have anyone in mind. These are more residents wanting to utilize the property. A lot of people are wondering where it's at.
Absolutely. And do advise them, Trails is doing some minor work in that area. So just if they are walking on that property, to just use caution with possible construction vehicles on the site.
You can get out there and fly, too.
Thanks.
But anyways, Lauren, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren.
All right, the.
Warrant.
No, no warrant. We're at the dock department, all right?
Oh, no, we're at the warrant. It's town meeting. Articles. Oh, I should want to go to the dock.
No, no, it doesn't matter. All right, consideration and possible action on voting into place support, remaining articles for special town meeting. So we have an updated sample of one?
Yes. So the one, the law, the legal search paper is the most recent that I have. So you've already voted to place and support forty-six, forty-seven, and forty-eight, though the numbers may have changed, but those are the same. There was one small change on the dog kennel one. We added the definition of kennel per recommendation of the solicitor.
Okay, so we're going to need a new.
You don't, out of the gap, even re-vote it.
I think technically, probably.
Okay, if you want, yeah, that's fine. So forty-seven, then I'd say.
Yeah, because we should be putting them on as written. So I will make a motion to place and support Article forty-seven, proposed change to general bylaws, Chapter 115, Animal Control. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great.
Forty-nine is the next one to look at. So we were granted, we received a grant for, I believe it's a hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars, a hundred seventy-eight eight, from, for our fire department, for three cardiac monitors and some turnout gear. When the pricing on the cardiac monitors comes out, it's a couple thousand over for each monitor. It turns out to be a total of fifteen thousand dollars. So we felt that for the cost of fifteen thousand dollars from free cash to get the third cardiac monitor would be worth putting on at a town meeting. So that is why that one's on there.
Makes sense to me. Any questions from the board? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to place and support Article forty-nine cardiac monitor purchase.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Great. So it doesn't really cost fifteen thousand? Oh, no, they're fifty-something thousand.
Yeah, when I first looked at this, I thought, oh, my goodness, that's the best bargain I ever saw for medical equipment.
No, no, this is, it's fifteen thousand to cover the third. So they came in about five thousand each over.
That makes so much more sense.
I hadn't read the summary at the bottom. You'd buy a ton of them.
And I just looked, and I thought, that's incredible. And it's incredible.
And congratulations to the five, a hundred seventy-eight thousand's a nice grant for us. So we're pleased with that.
And thank them for all their hard work. Okay, what are we on?
Next one is the library outdoor. If you recall, we voted a hundred ten thousand dollars to do an outdoor space for programming and handicapped accessibility and whatnot for the library. It appears that the bids might come in fifteen, twenty, twenty-five thousand over that. The bids are due to come in next week or the week after. I've drawn a blank on the exact date. They probably will be in before town meeting, but to be safe, I put a thirty thousand dollar cushion so that we don't lose the project for a want of a, basically, thirty, up to thirty thousand dollars.
So this is our compliance project with their library?
Partially compliance and increasing of outdoor programming space, yes.
All right, any questions from the board? All right, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to place and support Article fifty?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. All right, what's next?
So fifty-one came from Heather. This is a water treatment plant. So when we were doing the replacement of the filter, they had to do a repair of the interior. It's basically, given what they saw in that one tank, it's very likely that when they do the filter replacements in the other tanks, they're going to have to make similar repairs, given the nature of the tanks, I guess. And so this would be a water reserve fund balance of seventy-five thousand dollars to be sure that if we find that we do need to do those repairs on those tanks, we can do them.
Okay, so basically, the interior of the tank has deteriorated in one tank, and so consequently, as we review the other tanks, we want to make sure we have adequate funding so we don't have to wait.
Exactly.
Okay. Questions, thoughts, concern from the board?
Because while we're doing the filter replacement, it makes sense to.
Yeah, when you're in there, you want to do it. Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to place and support Article fifty-one.
Second.
All those in favor? Great, thank you. All right.
Fifty-two.
Okay, so Article fifty-two is to establish Sturbridge Hometown Heroes Revolving Fund. So this is a follow-up from our previous conversation about the funds from the race that we're going into.
No, 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 no. These are banners. This has nothing to do.
Oh, that's, sorry, I'm crossing out my wires.
These are banners. These are, if you remember, the Memorials and Monuments Committee came in, were doing the hometown banners where you honor a soldier. The person, how this works in communities is that you pay. You pay a few hundred dollars for the cost of the banner, the brackets, installation. But the cleanest way to do that, because if somebody writes a check to the town, it has to go to the general fund, and then we'd have to have a budget line item to spend. So at this point, what we'd like to do is establish a revolving fund so that money stays contained, so that if somebody wants to buy a banner, they spend, I guess it's two hundred dollars or whatever, and then we have the fund to buy the banners collectively at once instead of doing them as one-offs and then installing.
And my recollection is that we're putting these at the entrance on 131 from South Ridge, on Route 20 and to Brimfield.
Yeah, so, yeah, so likely 131 stopping at the common at Hall Road, so they won't interfere with the commons because the flags go. And then, yes, at the gateways on either side of 20.
Okay.
We have plenty of poles, so.
All right. Does that make sense to the board?
So this just establishes the revolving fund, and then the next article you have to vote, gives an amount.
Okay, I'll make a motion to establish the Sturbridge Home, oh, sorry, I'll make a motion to place and support the Sturbridge Hometown Heroes Revolving Fund.
I'll second that.
Do we, all those in favor? Great. All right, moving on to Article fifty-three, revolving fund spending limits, FY twenty-six.
And that just establishes the number, if you notice, at the bottom, fifteen thousand.
Gotcha.
I listed all of them. I've been told we have to list all the revolving funds each time. We will confirm that it's, if not, it'll just be that one. But there's no change to any of the other revolving funds.
Oh, this is going to be my question. So those were all approved at annual meeting?
Those were already approved at annual. And Barbara, I would.
We added the fifteen. You restated.
I was always told you have to restate all of them. Barbara was not sure that we did, so I'm just waiting to hear back from Jonathan. But either way, it's.
Just list them all, and we'll note it.
I figure we're safer for now, listing all.
Yeah. Okay, do we have a motion? Place and support?
I'll make a motion to place and support Article fifty-three.
Second.
All those in favor?
Fifty-four and fifty-five have been removed, so you should go right now to a Doughty Road. My, I have a.
Okay, this is a new fifty.
Yep, this is a new fifty-four.
Yeah.
Doughty Road land acquisition, and we have members of planning, open space, conservation, sort of everybody, all things outdoor. So let Jean give a quick explanation of this. This just got added literally today.
If anybody else wants to talk, they can, but Jean seems to be the most.
Jean's a mouthpiece on this one.
Hi, Jean.
Hi. Sorry, just getting over a cold.
It's okay.
So this is the Barrett Farm property on Doughty Road. Back in 2017, we had hoped to acquire this land. It was in chapter land, and we tried to exercise First Right of Refusal. And there was a developer who had a proposal for an equestrian subdivision, and so the vote failed at town meeting. And Mr. O'Connell has been working very diligently on a variety of alternatives analysis, and at this point, believes he's exhausted his alternatives. And his attorney reached out to me last week and asked if we would still be interested in the land for conservation and recreation purposes. And I told him, speaking for our land use boards, I wholeheartedly believe that we would be, and that I would love to bring it to the Board of Selectmen and ask if we could put it on the special town meeting warrant coming up. So that's what we're here for this evening. Planning Board did vote unanimously this evening, as did Open Space Committee, and I believe Recreation did as well. It's approximately two hundred and twenty-two acres, and we'd create a contiguous green corridor on that section of town. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice. It's a goal of the master plan, the Heritage Landscape Plan, our open space plan, including our newest plan that still has not yet been accepted by the state. So it's a very generous donation of Mr. O'Connell, and I'm here to ask that you place and support this article at town meeting.
We, I want to emphasize, this is for general municipal purposes, so it is not, doesn't have the restrictions sometimes that we put on other properties where we're concerned about integrity of, you know, species in wooded lands and things like that. And it's not a trail space. This, that's not wonderful, too, but this is a place that we can really look broadly at a number of things that we can use for the town.
It's one of the prettiest parcels in Sturbridge.
Really is.
So I got that email. I couldn't believe that it's come to fruition, because I know town meeting, I think, financed and supported, and it's got floated down. And it's beautiful, and, yeah.
And Jean and I literally have been, Jean's been scrambling over the weekend to try to make sure we got this on the docket, because the owner really, I think, wanted it.
Yeah.
By the end of the year.
For the end of the year, you know, I understand that. And so we were like.
I think we'll both be happy. It's very generous.
Like, I have to have it by one daylight. So thank you, Jean, for scrambling and getting all that through.
Thank you, Jean. Thank you, Charlie. Thank you, everybody in the board's involved, because it's, yeah, it's a really wonderful.
Very exciting.
Generous event. So with that, do we have a motion to place and support Article fifty-four?
I'll make a motion to place and support Article fifty-four.
Second.
All those in favor? Great, thank you.
Thanks, Jean. Thank you, everybody. Thanks, Charlie, for coming.
All right, moving on.
Close the warrant.
Oh, yeah. Do we have a, where are we? A motion to close the warrant for the special town meeting?
I'll make a motion to close the warrant for special town meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have the line item about this, right?
I believe so.
Chase, how do you vote?
Yes.
Very down?
Yes.
I vote yes. So the special town meeting is closed. Warrant is closed. So we're moving on to consideration and possible action on the accepted, accepting the amended temporary dock policy to remove specific permitting requirements.
You skipped the ADA. We can do the dock.
Let's do the dock.
We can do the dock. So this I had presented to you before. I did speak with SLAC. We basically aren't changing anything on the regulations. This is simply to say that we're not actively seeking people to come in and do permits. The logistics of that don't work. Who comes, who doesn't come, where they hang a permit, how the cops are going to know if there's a permit, whoever the, you as harbor master.
Yeah.
If anybody does anything that is out of the regulations, we ask that they come in for a special, like a variance on that, and then you as the harbor master could grant that variance. So if they want a dock that's larger because their water levels are low or they need to go out further, you all can make that judgment as needed. But generally, we are presuming, these are the regulations. If you put a temporary dock in, this is what they need to be. If it gets reported to us, then we deal with it then. That seemed to be okay. I guess we had, SLAC has, seemed to be comfortable with that. It does not mean that we will not revisit the regulations at some point collectively with recommendations from SLAC, because I still think we need to look at some of those parameters. But for now, at least so that we as a town are protected, that we have a policy, that we're not giving permits to some and not to others, who applied, who didn't apply. This just makes it a lot cleaner and still keeps us protected, that we have a policy. And if somebody violates it and we become aware of it, then we can deal with it.
Okay, I guess the question is, and I don't necessarily have any issue with this, but in terms of enforcement, how are we going to monitor?
Well, that's just it. It gets enforced if somebody calls it in, or if we become aware of it, or if a police officer sees a dock when they're out on the boats and says, hey, this dock's sticking out a hundred feet, you know. Then we, then it would come back. We would call those people in and have some type of a hearing.
Thoughts, concerns?
Yeah, that makes sense. I mean, we have a lot of bylaws that we don't actively have a permit for in order to enforce them.
More like inspections kind of a thing, right, like a code. Yeah, exactly.
Okay, at least for the, yeah, I think that there's other substance here, but it's probably adjacent. So with that, do we have a motion?
Go ahead. You're doing a good job. I'll just second it.
I'll make a motion to accept the amended temporary dock policy to remove specific permitting requirements.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
All right. Back to our consideration and possible action on adopting the ADA self-evaluation and transition plan of 2025.
So this is something we entered into. We had some funding. We did, we worked with a consultant to draft this. We put it out for public comment. I believe Jean had come back with some comments. We had a resident that came back with some comments. We incorporated what was appropriate, and the final version is out. But I never put it in front of you guys to formally adopt. So, and we are due to have it. I don't, Jean, do you remember when the last one had been? It's like fifteen or eighteen years?
I think maybe 2009, 2010.
Yeah, so we were well, it's been about fifteen years. So we were well past. So this brings us at least where we now have this. And now, because we've established the Disabilities Commission, and again, I announced to everybody, I need people with disabilities to join the commission. I need three people with disabilities, and a disability and a disability can be anything from hearing loss, whatever. Once, now that I have this, I can put the commission in place, because now they have something as a guide.
Okay, so do we have a motion on adoption of the ADA self-evaluation and transition plan of 2025?
I'll make a motion to adopt the ADA self-evaluation and transition plan of 2025.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you. So when we say transition, are these ways that we're going to try to increase our ADA accessibility? Like the trans. It looks at where we may not be fully compliant, what we need to do. We've already addressed some, like the painting of the parking lot in the police station to make sure the handicap spot is wide enough. I mean, some of it just put us sort of on notice of things that we need to do. We need to lower the voting ballot boxes, for example. Some of them a larger scale, so what it did was it reviewed all of our facilities and said, this needs to be done, this needs to be done. Some are immediate and quick. Others are frankly, long-term, that we're going to have to go to the state for, you know, some type of a variance or support on, because we may just logistically not be able to do it. Some buildings can't be done. We're dealing with an issue with a sink in the library, you know, but it's an employee area. I apologize. Did we get a copy of this? Yes, you got a OneDrive link.
Oh, that's right. Okay, thank you. I'll look at it.
Yep.
Yeah, so basically.
If you have any other questions on it, you can always.
No, that's right, I just.
Yeah.
Great, no, that's good progress. Thank you, Robin. All right, then we are moving on to action item N. This is about certain allegations that were raised at our last meeting. We are going to, I'm going to make a motion to authorize the chair to work with our Maya to appoint an investigator involving those allegations. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? So, moving on. We're going, we're going to our last item, which is appointment of Reed Hillman to the Personnel Classification and Policy Committee for a term to expire July 4th, 2028. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to reappoint Reed Hillman of the Personnel Classification and Policy Committee for a term to expire July 4th, 2028.
Just trying to show me up? Do it better? Do it in a second.
When we get to the end of the road here.
I'll make a second, and all those in favor? Great, thank you. All right, old business. Chase?
I have no, thank you.
Old.
The only thing I was going to raise, are we going to have a retreat at some point to give new goals?
We should, let's wait till the next meeting when Mary Lou's here, so we can look at everybody's calendar.
I don't have any other.
We'll have to actually do my.
Yeah, we have to do the evaluation. We got off track on that. It's been submitted, it's all done for a while. Okay, I have no old business. New business, select board member to be appointed to the Town Betterment Committee and Personnel Classification Policy Committee.
Do you want to wait till Mary Lou's here?
Yeah, so wait till Mary Lou is here to see if she has a particular interest. So is that okay to the table, guys?
Yep.
Okay. With that, correspondence, Mary?
We have correspondence from the Sturbridge Police Association, Old Sturbridge Village, and Michael Strupa. Let's see. From the Police Association to bring attention to the current staffing challenges facing our police department, and it's addressed to the town administrator.
I did speak with a member of the union today who said that if the board has any questions, you know, he said he could come if you had questions tonight, but I said to him, if you had any questions and you wanted to pass them along through me to them, you certainly could, or if you wanted to invite him after you got a chance to digest that, you can invite them as well, so.
Yeah, I mean, they're welcome at any of our meetings, honestly, so if there's a particular point of concern, we're happy to hear from them, we appreciate their concerns.
Yep, they said that they were, I said, I asked him if he wanted to speak. He said, no, only if you had questions, just pass them along.
No, yeah, we'll sort of digest it and see. Okay, thank you.
And then the OSV is from James Donahue, president and CEO, thanking, thanking Tom Chamberlain for securing the efforts of an anonymous donation to purchase the Sturbridge cow for the town.
Who's out front.
I know, I love seeing it. I'm so curious who that anonymous donor is.
I'm very proud that the cow bell is my cow's actual bell. It has been worn on a real cow, so her bell is real.
And then the last one is a letter of support from Michael Struper, and goes on for several pages in support of Treasure, well, she's saying Treasure Barbara Berry, but our Director of Finance.
All right, great. All right, approval of minutes going to the October 6th, 2025 minutes. Do we have, I don't think we can vote on these.
So.
Mary Lou's not here.
Why wasn't here for this meeting?
Yep.
Yeah, so we'll just table those. Okay, Citizens Forum. Anybody have anything to say? All right, hearing none. Do we have any motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Great, thanks.